Call me the order, roll call.
Charles Harper.
Yeah.
Steve Aaron. Carol Hahnke. John Ely.
Here.
Dennis Workmeister.
Here.
Mayor Stammer.
Yes.
Chris Erdman.
Here.
Kelly Topp. Sandy Fritz here.
Approved agenda for the June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting.
Hello.
Second.
Hello, favor.
Aye.
Approved treasure report for the month of May, two thousand eighteen.
The only thing is with paying all this out of the electric, I mean, and we have dropped the rates in the electric, but we're still at one point seven million in our electric budget. And we're getting closer to having all these projects done. So, I think we're all right there yet.
You probably told us already, but what they're hundred thousand from that junior fund, what was that for?
Um, now it's for motors.
Oh, okay.
We agreed to give an economic development grant for the war loan.
How long is that term on that one?
Ten years.
Ten years, yeah.
But I think the first payment actually starts already this August, so.
Oh, it should because they rely on you.
Yeah.
Mm.
So, ten thousand a year, basically.
Yeah.
No interest or low interest.
Maybe it was two, two or three percent interest, it wasn't much.
Okay. I need some to grow it.
Yep.
All right. I'll make a motion and I'll approve it.
So.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Any queries from the audience? You guys got the man in question?
Not really.
Aunt Dory.
Excellent.
Um, we're having a work comp audit next week Tuesday. And then also, um, our regular audit is scheduled for July seventeenth and eighteenth. And then also for the electric lineman position, um, the one that we did interview has taken a job elsewhere. So, I wasn't sure if you want me to just continue to advertise and send it back to NCC again, or what do you want me to do? Okay?
I don't have much choice.
Okay, that was all I had.
No reason why he took it there after he was interviewed here?
Uh, I'm sure the pay was.
Pay was more.
More, yeah.
That's what I was guessing.
Right, she has to be determined to let it be.
Yeah.
I didn't probably want with an R receipt or something.
But, uh, R C.
That's what I figured.
Just a quick question, Sandy, what's the controller at Ball Field, it's interesting.
Yeah, it was you.
On the score.
Is that the thing that they do the stats with on them?
That's, no, that's the thing that operates the scoreboard.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Who broke it?
I don't know who broke it. Um, I had the little league coaches come in saying that they felt that the seventh and eighth grade coach lost it and had the girl softball shed ransacked because he never locked the door. When I talked to Mr. DeZao, he replied back that Mr. Lodi did not recall that, that they had never ever opened the shed for him. So, and he kinda said, well, you've got some young kids probably doing your little league. And I'm like, I'm not getting into this because it's not some little kid, it's a parent, an adult, and.
So, it's been misplaced, basically, this looks like.
Yeah, so I talked to Mr. Moore and we've gotten different keys and gotten a different lock for all that stuff. And, and the school is gonna pay for half of it.
So, it's a reward control place?
Yeah, makes a scoreboard run.
Oh, okay, got it.
So, how much?
Uh, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars by the time we got it, and then the school will split half of it with us.
I thought we should put cameras down there.
That probably wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
Then you gotta look at them.
It happens a lot, I would hope, because they're also missing.
You only gotta look at them if something happens.
Right. And then I think they have dates, you can kinda go back through that, you don't have to go through the whole thing.
What, the tape?
Yeah.
These are the last thing.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Depends how many cameras you got on, how big your hard drive is, but.
Okay.
I think they're missing some other stuff down there, and, uh, the window got broken out of the waste out shed down there.
Were you talking to the complex or were you talking to the park?
The city park.
City park.
The large one, oh, okay.
I guess I don't quite understand what is said, and if another thing I'll have to ask Wednesday night is, why the seventh and eighth grade boys are playing here? They play at ten thirty in the morning, so why aren't they playing at the complex? Because the girls do. So, I don't know what the deal.
That is a thought, because, yeah, the boys have been playing there constantly.
Yeah.
Because they have them again today.
How, I just, how full, how much are two, um, what's the parking situation? I mean, could that be the reason just to split the parking?
High schools, maybe, that could be, I mean, yeah, because there's a lot of cars down there when they play, so.
But now with that tennis court, that's really helpful.
Yeah, that helped too, so.
All right.
All right.
Sorry, I forgot that.
All right, let's move.
We'd asked anyhow, yeah.
We'll move down to number nineteen. Uh, approved pay request number two for payment from Primoris Abdeen and.
Abdeen. Is that how you say it?
Yeah, I think so.
You don't know either, huh? They just want their money?
Nah, I'm just PSC.
Right. So, we got any issues with this, or anything that's been going to the plan?
Yeah, um, I think they should be done in another week or so, going out together.
They'll be terminated out there and everything around, they're hoping to, we're hoping to, the weather hasn't cooperated well.
No, yeah, that's all. It sound like. Think they were gonna have another crew coming in this week to help.
Oh, really?
Pull wires.
Pull wires, yeah, they said this week they're gonna start pulling.
Whatever they.
They work some way dollars.
Yeah. But they thought, once they start pulling wires, they'd be done in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think they're still planning on the outage this weekend, so. One side of it.
So, am I not getting the big green box done on my fist though? It's all inside, it's all stuck, perfect. Something else we're gonna hit with the loader is somewhere, I don't remember where it's going.
You'll know when you hit it.
Why?
You know those parks?
Those parks.
No.
Oh. I'd rather have it stop, I mean, stop and break it, so.
Don't let Brock hold.
So, what's the outage involved in?
Just the elevator.
Oh, just the elevator, okay. For the tie-in, I assume.
So, there's seventy-five thousand, is that complete the electric going, bunker?
No, there's still, there'll probably be one or two more pay requests, yeah, it's two hundred and forty-four thousand.
All right.
It's on your machine, you can put through.
So, by contract, everything's good on, for making the payment?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. I'll move to approve payment request number two for Primoris Abdeen.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Uh, twenty, approved pay request number four for payment from Reading Gravel and Excavator.
So, this is, um, actually just catch up from all the grading they did, you know, three, four, five, six weeks ago. I mean, they've been done for a couple of weeks, but, um, so that should be done, other than waiting for electric to get out there and then they can, um, finish the lift station. Otherwise, their work is done.
Okay. Was it part of the street to that, or not? This?
This is just all out there?
Yep, correct, this is all out there for the rock that you see out there.
Okay.
So, will the paving contract have to pull some of the rock out, or is that the base for the?
No, I mean, in a perfect world, it'll be about an inch high, and they'll come in and trim out that inch and.
Okay.
Making these surface corrections and pave right on, so.
Okay.
Um, cul-de-sacs take a while, a lot of handwork, um, but, I mean, we hope that's an in and out project, which it needs to be, um, and I guess we can get through this. Um, I've been trying to get, get them in here and get them scheduled, and, um, I know they're busy and behind like everybody else, but.
So, no idea when they're gonna be here, you have to?
No, um, I guess, since we're talking about the kind of on a side note, I haven't really seen it, but I saw an email pop up from Troy that he's gonna be gone that day now, so he sent it to you in email tomorrow. I'll try and pick it up for day. We did have a pre-con scheduled for the twenty-seventh, for pre-construction meeting, um, but that'll now change to whatever will end up working for the rest of us.
But they have a deadline, do the work has to be done.
Yeah, in August, so.
Okay.
Um, again, that, that out there, I mean, optimistically, if weather cooperates and everything, in a perfect world, they could probably be in there a couple, three weeks, but, and August isn't that far away, really. We can, it's, we're gonna run a week or two, and we're, first of July, so.
Right. So, it's Reading Gravel, now they're, they're.
No, no, they're done, other than finishing the lift station.
So, that's all they're gonna do?
Yep, um, everything else will be done through, uh, Bainbridge and Star.
So, the request is good?
Yeah, no, I, I think everything's good out there, they've done a good job, so.
Well, I'll make a motion, approve pay request number four for payment to Reading Gravel and Excavator.
I'll second it.
All favor.
Aye.
So moved.
Um, and I guess while I'm here, if it comes up, they would like to keep it closed, um, you know, technically, if you don't sign it out, it's Reading's road, and on top of that, if people start using it and trying to get mud and stuff in and out of there, then it will screw up the paving. So, I mean, if someone's like, why can't we use it, that's, that's why, so that's another reason we wanna get Bainbridge in here and get it paved, so they can use the road as theirs, so.
So, do we gotta throw up blocks, throw blocks there, or signs or something, or barriers or something?
For now, I think we'd be okay, but.
Okay, just kinda keep an eye on it?
Yeah.
We probably got barriers and we've got lots of barricades out on it.
And we have no idea for sure when Bainbridge will be coming, right?
No, I, I've, I've asked him quite a few times, and finally, gave him two dates, I said, give me this day or that day, and that's gonna be our pre-con, and then he switched that, so. Um, I mean, when they got the bid, we told, we, we had heard that he was behind for last fall, like some other people were, so, um, we gotta give them a little benefit, but still, same token, we gotta get it done too, so.
Amen.
Fair enough.
That's good.
But, we also know when you come in here just to start, tear something up and then leave for three weeks, that gets people confused, so.
Or like leave for like six months.
But there's, uh, if needed, if it gets by August, it's penalties, right? With contract?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Unless it's a trend, we don't get there.
Unless it's raining.
Yeah, it's working day, so any rain day doesn't count, um, but that's definitely a discussion we would have, anything into September.
Quick, quick question on weather day, who determines that?
Usually us.
That's the only one.
God.
Well, yeah, okay.
I don't know if you've got a half-life to wait for that.
Okay.
Um, and that kinda depends on their demeanor to, you know, if they're way behind and they're screwing the pooch and it rains ten drops, and they say, ah, I get a rain day, no, um.
That's what I was just gonna say, I assume.
You know, if they're trying their hardest and, and, and it rains at two in the afternoon, downpours, and they can't work the rest of the day, nah, you know, you don't know if you'd do it a half a day or full day.
A day like today, it rains about ten thirty for half an hour, and then it's not raining since then, would that be a weather day?
Um, that would kinda depend on them and how far away they are from home. Um, by that, I mean, if it's, if they're like, ah, it's too wet, we're not gonna go to work till two or three, we're not gonna sit around for half a day, I, you know, I kinda get that.
Yeah, I get that too.
Um, but, you know, no, if they were sitting in their truck for an hour because it rains a little bit and they tried to eat a whole day out of us, no. You know, you guys were here and did something, so.
Okay. All right. All right, appreciate it.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Yep.
And, uh, I'll look at Troy's email.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody, thank you.
I'll bet, I'll get you that too now.
All right, comeback number seven. Public hearing of the city council of the city of Plina in the state of Iowa on a matter of proposal to enter into a development agreement with Marilyn B. Sharda and Cheryl L. Sharda, and the hearing, they're on.
Do you need the motion to open it, or?
Just to close it, as he announced. The only thing I had was Marlon's called me and has some concerns about how unlevel the lot is out there. He said that he felt that when he went out there before and looked at it, it was not this bad. And so, he said he talked to Brad Foreman and, and he told him it'd be decent. Ten thou, or, let's see, ten thousand five hundred dollars to haul in and level it out, and then plus the cost of the dirt, and he said it'd be three thousand cubic yards was Brad's estimate. So, he's wondering if we can offset the purchase price to help pay for leveling the lot up. Um, I had talked with Jason and we talked with Bainbridge last week, and they are willing to dump the dirt on that lot. They, you know, it's cheaper for them to just dump it there than to try and haul it out.
Right.
So, we could provide him the dirt, but that's what he's asking, is then are we gonna discount him on the purchase price? Because he's gonna have to have this additional cost for shaping it up.
When do we start dealing on this particular proposal? I mean, why didn't Marlon originally work at the lot first?
I don't know, it had to be probably two, two months ago, I suppose.
Oh, okay.
Because it had thirty days that you waited, that you have to wait, and so then, and it took Tisha a little while to get the, you know, the papers all drawn up, so it had to be two to two and a half months ago.
Well, I did take the opportunity, go out there and look at the lot, and if there was any activity this spring, it's covered up pretty well already, so.
Well, it's all we.
It was pretty bad before.
No, I know it was pretty bad before, but what I'm saying, I don't think there's been.
Yeah, there's no sign of having been dirt work this year.
No, well.
No.
I would say Bainbridge will give him the dirt, but.
Where's the dirt coming from?
When they dig the streets.
On roads.
Streets.
Is there gonna be decent enough dirt for him to build up?
We need enough to level it up, and all it's just all fill, mostly clay.
Yeah.
And he's building a building up there, right, an office type?
Yeah, and then with some storage in the back.
Okay.
I guess my opinion is give him the dirt, and the rest is his baby, I guess. I mean, if it wasn't changed from the time he first looked at it till now?
He, I don't know where he's applying.
Right, he knew, I mean.
And now he's starting to hedge because he's gonna be out some money.
Well, sorry about that.
Well, that's your decision.
And it's up to him whether he wants to continue with the proposal or not too, right?
Right, because now you're making a change, because, I mean, now that's not in here, that we would supply him the dirt. So, I talked.
I mean, you never did that for anybody else, right?
Um, yeah, we did a couple of them.
Okay.
But I don't think it was that much.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we don't, it'd be okay though for Bainbridge to give him the dirt, right? Have him change the proposal.
No, I guess not.
The proposal's basically dollars, right, that we're concerned with.
Because if we'd have. On the contract, it reads that once the contractor comes in and starts to remove the dirt, the dirt belongs to the contractor.
Right.
So, we're really not giving it to him, this, you know, Bainbridge, I can't say that.
And we're.
They're giving it to him.
So, that'd be between Marlon, or the Shardas and Bainbridge to work that out.
So, I suppose if we change like the purchase price or anything like that, then we'd have to start over again, so.
Bainbridge is willing to do that?
Yes, yeah.
And Marlon's aware of that, or no?
No, he is not.
Okay.
So, he's just wondering what the city would do on the purchase price and on the dirt.
We'll make sure it's the dirt upstream.
Yep, get him as much as we can give him.
Ten thousand five hundred, or ten thousand eight hundred dollars to, for the dirt work, whatever, I think it is, it's not that bad, really. I didn't know.
Well, and if Bainbridge is gonna dump it on the lot, that cost is gonna come down, because then Brad won't be hauling it, right?
That's right.
Right, I guess that's.
It's pretty reasonable, we could have worked on them before, I think, so.
Well, what's the price of the lot? The total price?
Ten thousand.
Is that that right on here, that seven, eight hundred?
And then he would actually get that repaid back to him, once he builds and builds a, a building over seven and five thousand.
Which he's gonna do, so.
Which he'll do.
I guess if he really wanted to, you could, you could make it cheaper, but it ain't gonna matter anymore.
Right.
Now, didn't we get that lot back?
Yes.
So, we've seen a little bit of money on that already, haven't we?
Yes, we have.
You had the, yeah, I had it first. Oh, yeah, you took both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
He, he hopefully is getting, if, if, uh, the contractor's gonna give him the dirt, I think we stand with the price.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
I'll second that. All in favor of that?
Yep.
Whoop, do we do that, or we gotta close the public?
Better close, I'll close the hearing first.
Okay.
I like motion, close the public hearing.
All right. All favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is not closed. Now, would you like to make the motion to leave our stands and let Bainbridge cover the dirt upstream? Okay?
Sandy can work it better than I can.
He does a good job.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolution approving sale of real property.
So, this is what you would do, and now you've done it in thirty days, so now you're saying that, yes, you are going to sell them this. It's actually a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the development agreement then between us and Sharda's salary. And basically, it's just the development agreement restated.
So, may I like to introduce that resolution?
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Support for the resolution? A second. All right, roll call, Charlie Harper.
Yep.
Steve Aaron. Carol Hahnke.
Yep.
John Ely.
Yes.
Dennis Workmeister.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Now, this means that we're selling it to him, but he still has to agree to what we just said.
Right, he's still gonna have to stand the cost of paying Brad, we'll give him the dirt, Bainbridge will go from there.
Right, but like you said, he gets a lot of that back anyhow.
Right. Yeah, gets the purchase price back, so.
All right, okay, sounds good.
All right, number nine, approved liquor licenses. Clean a chamber of commerce, class B beer, June twenty-eighth, city park, June twenty-ninth, airport, five-day event license.
So, we have to get, I just got the first set of the, like, because first, the, you know, they're gonna have games in the park that Friday night, so the chamber applied for that underneath there, and they even got the wrong gram shop on it. So, I just got the license today, so hopefully the license number comes up tomorrow, so then I can get that to Adam Harper, so he can apply to transfer it out to the airport. So, then it'll go from the Ball Diamond out to the airport then, for on Saturday. So, because the, the chamber cannot have two separate liquor licenses underneath their name.
That was true.
So, for the.
But they can transfer.
But they can transfer it.
Okay.
That's what we're doing.
Sounds good.
And then the other one is Prairie Market, for on Saturday in the park, when they have their wine tasting, I don't know the other, you know, usually they have several different wineries come, uh, something happened and they couldn't get that lined up, so Laura is just gonna do her wine that they sell in the store up there, from Prairie Market, so that'll be there. But that's under Prairie Market, not underneath the chamber. And then Casey's is just their standard liquor license renewal.
We can do these in one lump, yeah.
Yep, you can.
So, am I like to make a motion to approve A, B, and C?
Unless somebody wants to cut something out.
Right. To approve all?
All of them.
Your support for that?
Hold on a second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Peru fiscal year nineteen twenty cigarette permits for Prairie Market and Dollar General.
Neither one of them have any cigarette violations.
Okay. So, I'd like to introduce, or make that motion?
I'll make it.
Support?
I'll second.
All favor? So moved. Eleven, Bright Energy Choices Program.
They used to have a program called River Winds, and now they're introducing this Bright Energy Choices program. And so, what it is, you can buy a renewal, renewable energy certificates, and then that way, that says that the power that's supplied to your business is a renewable energy, like wind energy or something like that. And they're recommending that the cost of that be one-half of a cent that would be added to each customer's bill. So, what they would like to do us, right, for us to do right now, is send it out to all of our customers and see if anybody would, you know, be interested in this. And then by the time August first rolls around, then if we get anything back, we would submit what our estimate is back to Missouri River. And then this would replace the Bright Energy for the River Winds program that they had before. But when we did this the last time, we've only had two people that ever signed up for it, and that was actually just two residential customers. But I do think we should maybe send it out and just, you know, see if we get something.
So, as you said, that the business is about, would have to pay a half a cent more?
Yes, you would pay a half a cent more, is how I understand it.
And what does that do for them, for us, or?
Then that means, like, if you're, you want your business to be like all green or all energy efficient, then that says that your power is coming from a renewable energy source, like a wind turbine or something like that.
Does most of it come from them?
Most of it's hydro, yeah.
Riverline, they can't.
Should give it a second off.
Yeah.
So, they're, they're, they're wanting you to go green, but you're gonna pay for it, basically?
Right, you're gonna pay an extra for it.
Makes sense, doesn't it?
Does.
Absolutely.
You know, other kind of movies, have they been, any of them?
I haven't heard from them.
I got that.
Because I haven't really been anywhere to ask them, so.
I just want your.
Yes, I think you should probably send that, I mean, there are people that are interested in it, and.
Doesn't cost anything to offer the program.
No, and then if somebody would be interested in it, then we can make that estimate and send it in to them, so, so I guess we'll just get it sent out.
So, who are the two residential customers that are under the other program? Were they big users or something, right?
No, one was Marty Joseph, and the other one was your wife.
She forgot to tell you.
Every day.
She forgot to tell you, daddy.
But that's on the property that's been sold now too, so now it's actually just Marty, so.
And she sold the property, too. She, Marty, she's not.
But she forgets to tell you that, too.
Let her do the books.
You know what, she's got another bank account, too. But we're not gonna go there.
All right, so we're gonna let, we're gonna send that out, so everybody knows about it, and we're gonna do that.
Sounds good.
Number twelve, request from Love Inc. for a shop with a cop program.
Good program, Nate?
I think it's a very good program.
So, do you go like to schools and talk to them, is that what you do?
No, our, our part is just, uh, Love Inc. pretty much handles most of the.
Okay.
The office work or whatever, and then we, basically, the cops just show up one evening and they have pizza with them and talk to them and then go with them wherever they decide to, to do the purchasing, they go get some clothes and whatever supplies and stuff, and we're around, you know, just basically to interact with them, so.
And then the kid, the people just go to, like, do they go to Sheldon Ford, or do they?
Uh, last year, we all, everything went through ShopCo's and stopped closing, actually sent an email, hey, we're gonna have to go somewhere else, it's not a problem, you know, but I don't know if they decided exactly where and how we're gonna do it, yeah.
Okay.
I'll move to approve request from Love Inc. for two hundred and fifty dollar donation.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
So moved. Request from First Co-op Association to construct grain probe over Main Street.
Mark, I'll be back, and then Steve came in, Steve couldn't be here tonight, but basically, what they came up with, they think is probably not gonna work. So what they're just asking from you tonight is, do you want this to run over Main Street, is it an option at all or not?
Alright, okay, so.
It's gonna be there forever then, right? Once they put it up, it's.
So what, what are they?
Where the old scale, or the new scale is now, they have that grain probe, or they don't have it there yet, but they're gonna have to put one there. So then that grain probe would run up and over Main Street, plus some electrical wires, and then it would come into the office.
So bas- basically, I mean, ba- well, would basically just be wired, wouldn't it?
No, it's actually two, the grain can come through.
Why are they saying why they can't, why can't they board out an under?
Something to do with the moisture content of the pipe.
It depends on which company I asked you that question to, and you said depending on which company they go with something. This company that gave them their, this proposal won't go underground.
So we'd have to find somebody else.
And he, Steve said he's pretty sure there's some other ones, other companies that will do it underground, so.
I don't think it's really in the interest to go over there, over there. Really. Besides one looking weird.
I think it's gonna look like crap.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Not that way.
What they need to do is they need to hire a couple of young guys to jump up in the way and screw the probe.
You need to land it over.
So really all we gotta do is say that we are not interested in allowing the running over of this.
Over the top of us.
Probably should be a motion.
It's not like, trying to, to not allow the run, running of the probe over this street. To support for that.
Uh, I support it.
Okay. All fair?
Aye.
Cause what have they been doing before, doing it like what Danny said?
Well, there is a probe right there.
Their current scale, so.
Oh, I see.
They could, they could still probe it right there and go across the street with it too.
Okay, I was just gonna say, cause they've been doing it somehow.
Yeah, yeah, so they're gonna try, they're gonna try to run the scale from the current office too? I mean, that seems a little, I don't seem to have a good enough view to see whether they're actually running proper.
Well, never. Yeah, I don't know, I think they need to put a little shack over or do something.
He isn't our employee, but.
Like, we just run over the pipe and everything right and develop it there. I mean, there's a shop area there, yeah, I guess there's probably reasons, but whatever, yeah.
Alright. Zoning ordinance violation, this guy should have known better.
That was true.
I called him, let's see, what, on six twelve, and I asked him, you know, he told me you were gonna have me the building permit by June first, he said, well, he still didn't know that they were gonna, where they were gonna put it, but Miles has come in, has gotten the building permit and the moving permit to move the storage shed over, but I have not gotten anything from Sean. And I guess my concern is that you can only cover thirty percent of your backyard, and I'm not sure he has enough footage to even put that garage back there.
Also, Miles is only taking that small shed.
Yes, his permit is to take the storage shed. So I really need to have a building permit from him to even see if he even has the room to leave it back there. It'll be close, but he's gotta be ten feet from the house and then seven feet from the alley, and, and then the ordinance reads you can only be, only cover thirty percent of the backyard, so.
Thirty percent of the, this whole lot or just?
No, just of the, of the rear yard, set, or the rear yard. Yeah, so I was figuring the other day, he's got, well, this is just off of Beacon Snyder, but let's see, it's a hundred by, where did that go to, here it is. It's a hundred this way and then a hundred and sixty-five here, so I figured if he was about halfway here, then he's still gotta be ten feet away from the house, so that gives him about seventy-two, or then it would be seventy-two point five times a hundred. And then times a thirty percent, so then that's two thousand one hundred and seventy-five square feet. So I, but he's still gonna have to be seven feet from here and seven feet from here, so you gotta subtract that all out too. So, and I just don't know how big that garage is, so.
It's a pretty good size.
Yeah.
Plus there's another building back there too.
Yes.
That has been there.
Yeah, I think he's, the way I see it, he's probably ten feet from his house right now.
Yeah, oh yeah, he'd easy could be that, but, but there's a tree in there and some other stuff, so I really need to have him submit something. And Miles had submitted his moving permit, and he's got the insurance, he's paid the fees, everything. And he's got his, you know, building permit, but it's, he said it would probably be July before he could get somebody to run the cement to move and then move the building out of there. Well, we've been messing with this since April eighth, so.
Well, Sean should have had a moving permit to even move those on there.
Yes, he should have, you know. So we never had that either. So I don't know what she wanna do, I mean, that's a, it's a violation, and so then it actually should go to the attorney and she should notify him, but it's a two hundred and fifty dollar day fine until he corrects it then.
Is it, is it per day or is it just a one-time fee?
Well.
When I read that, I was a little confused about exactly how the penalty was, um, or what the penalty would be. I kinda read it that it's like a one-time deal, but.
Each day that the violation is permitted to exist constitutes a separate offense, so I'm.
And it's a daily, yes. I thought it was a daily too.
And then.
But not to exceed seven fifty?
Right, so you only, but then he would have to pay for the lawyer and the court costs also.
I hate to see, I hate to do all that.
Yeah, why don't we give him a date that's a week or two out, we're done with the other people. Date that's a week or two out, whatever, whatever you wish it may be, to have this all completed by, or else then fines will start. Way it gives him a, gives him a chance to do it.
Aye.
We've done it with others and what we have.
I agree.
But that's the letter that Tisha has.
Then it, yeah, then it would go to the attorney, yeah.
Or if we did, or if you did those letters.
No, I have, all I've sent is just the letter that says.
No, but I mean with, if he doesn't, the violations thing, should that come from our city attorney?
Yes, that needs to come from the city attorney.
Like if we give him a week or two?
No, if you say that's it, you need to have this done, the violation has to come from her.
But we can send him a letter saying it got till.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
June twenty, whatever.
But that is, in the letter you said that it'll all be explained?
Yeah.
Article eighteen of.
Unless it's, if you don't, then you'll be sent the nuisance violations from the city attorney and.
So he, he has a number of permits that he filled out, right, if he wanted to get that?
Well, he actually needs two, he'll be permits one for each building.
Right.
Even though Miles has the one?
Well, Sean moved him from Casey's across the street to his house, and then we got a moving permit.
Oh, like, period.
Yes, and he knew that because we discussed it at a Board of Adjustments meeting.
And the reason we do the permits is so if they hit, ah, wire, falls off on a car, we know we got the insurance.
I think somehow we need to make them understand that we need business, but to save the expense on our part, this kind of void going to Tisha, but.
Yeah, cause he's gotta get.
Well, that's a, yeah, but he's gonna understand the, the business.
Right, so the two, two moving permits and a building permit is what he needs at this point, right?
Yeah, cause Miles has filled all his stuff out, he's got it, ready to go.
So if all he does is get those ready to go, and we give him like, Justin said, till the end of this month or something, then he doesn't have to worry about a penalty.
No, but the only thing would be is if the garage doesn't fit and you need the variance, then it's gonna have to go to the Board of Adjustments.
But then it's in the process, I mean, the whole thing is kinda okay, right?
Right, then it's in the works, right, yeah.
Except that he moved it before he should have.
Right.
Right, yeah.
His building permit and all that should have been in place to begin with.
Alright, he got it over his head.
He always does.
Yeah.
That Sean.
Yeah, he's going it over his head.
So we need a motion for that?
Right, and then set a date of when you wanna have it.
What date would you like to give him to?
Well, we're not quite through June right now.
Well, I, I do know, we go to the last fire department meeting, that of course this is Sean's busiest time of the year, and he's working from six thirty to six thirty every day. So I'm just telling you that, um, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Well.
Who's he working with, I, um, Samantha?
Yeah.
Like, you give him to like July fifth?
Well, that's what I'm wondering if we should.
Cause then there's, probably gonna be some vacation days in there from work.
Well, his wife's around, she can do this too, she can write this up.
Well, I don't know what much she's capable of doing.
Anymore?
I don't know.
Well, I know she's got problems, but I thought she could still.
She's been very ill.
Yeah, I know.
You know, and.
I guess from my perspective, I'd like to give him maybe closer to a month, you know, through the fourth of July, and then there's really no excuses to.
So are you saying July fifteenth or July nineteenth? That'd be the third week in July, that'd be the money. July fifteenth.
Yeah, let's do that.
Everybody give her that, alright, so Samantha, you can make a motion to get Sean to July fifteenth to come up to the proper.
I think that's plenty long.
I, I'll, I'll, I'll go to him and explain it, or put that too.
Well, I think I would do that, so he can understand the dialogue, so. Do you even notice anything to send a line, just to, he knows. Alright, so that's your motion, is there support for your motion?
I'll second it.
All fair?
Aye.
Use the city property at Wells Five North Main Street.
Richard Tiltse came in here last month and said that he would be vacating, and he is out of that. I don't wanna say old Iowa State Bank building, so it's, that, but that's what it is. But I just kinda put in here where we're at with it, I mean, between the insurance and the taxes and that, I mean, it's between eight, nine thousand dollars to operate it with the utilities, and I do not know what the black energy bill, what that, what that bill would run.
Sure substantial for building that stuff.
Right. So, I mean, we can apply for that, um, that take the fifteen hundred dollars off if it's vacant for so long. And then we also did, I did apply for the Business Property Tax Credit, now being it came back to us. So that'll take the taxes down a little bit, and if we have it vacant for a year, then it'll come down even more, yes. But I guess, I mean, we need to discuss what we wanna do with that building.
I'd put it up for sale, chief.
We had discussed in here that, you know, maybe if we move the city office there, cause we're getting pretty cramped in here, cause we got them two in an office and him and Kelly in an office. But I don't, you know, I don't know if that's a good idea when you have a person donate the money to build this building and then we don't utilize it either.
Right.
So.
Maybe we could dip the transformers on their building and make a nice office in there for these guys. Get out some of the garbage, make a nice shop stall there, like a wash of cars and keep it nice. There aren't two big wankers in there, I don't know.
The, uh, the Chamber Commerce oughta have an office someplace in some kind of a welcoming area, I mean, I don't know.
That's not a bad idea.
We're, 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 we're a small town, but we need to have somebody volunteer somebody out a, a week or several, a number of people, and then have a place where they can go. It probably takes a little of the sanity, when people come in here asking dumb questions, they could.
Well, even like to find out what housing is available, I mean, they could have different things that they do, I don't know what, what else, that might be a thought.
So if it were a chamber entity, does that help us out with taxes at all?
Yeah, I don't think it could be tax exempt. To see if the city makes it their building, and then it's tax exempt, as long as we're using it for our own use. And the Chamber is yours.
So just not owning it, you actually have to use it?
Yeah.
There's enough room in there.
Cause we own it, right, yes.
Cause they get it out of us.
That's a possibility, I guess, yeah.
Well, you have a little expenses networking from there back to here, to the server.
Well.
But.
Not so much, I mean, just, just, we need internet access, but I need.
But he's got that or had it.
You'd have an added printer, you'd have an added, you'd have some extra utilities, obviously, but.
You just need a PPU.
Well, why don't we, uh, just somebody along the talk to the Chamber and see if.
Access to the internet.
I mean, if the Chamber's actually gonna use it, put an office in there where they got. Where they can answer questions and actually have something? I guess it'd be worth it one day, and if we can get it for tax exempt, then we're just up for utilities.
Well, we got this other group of people that are working with a Chamber, whatever they call it. Yeah, and, and there's, there's all kind of under the same umbrella, and, and, uh, maybe we'll get some more activity.
Cause then they could have their meetings in there too, there's a big boardroom in the back there.
Where do they go now, just meet for a lunch place, or where do they go?
Sometimes they come in here, sometimes they meet at Prairie Market, or Prairie Walons, or, I mean, it's just anywhere where they can find that day.
So that would be a plus then to have that using it.
I'd ask what they would pay the utilities out now.
Cause then if we did that and moved you guys out, Kelly could move into one, or you, one of those offices, and and then we could use that back for more storage again.
That's a beautiful building.
That's, yeah, it's a huge building, there's a lot to it.
The mayor probably could have a lot.
I don't mean it anymore.
He's got an office, isn't he?
But then we could still advertise, we could still advertise upstairs for sale. Hope, hope there's somewhere nearby to put apartments up there.
I was just saying, I would love to see that we could do some apartments.
Could we sell half of it?
The state of Iowa does offer that, um, Community Catalyst Grant, and it's due in October. And you can get up to a hundred thousand dollars as a maximum grant award to renovate a building.
I'll get asbestos on it, I'll check if there's asbestos.
It'd be a start anyway, and I mean.
We should look into that. See what that would be, and then I think maybe we could do a couple of.
There's asbestos on there, cause it's all wood floor.
Well, the way over there is full.
Yeah, there's maybe someone.
There's a lot of white ceilings.
Yeah.
So I don't want, and if we had a couple offices, especially maybe there'd still be room for an apartment down below.
Right, you have to put in the back.
So who would, these people would come in and give you ideas, or what do they just do, or are they just the grant?
They're just the grant people, you've gotta find a contractor to work with, and it's through the city, and but.
So that hundred thousand, does that, does that have to go to the city, if the city turns it into apartments? Or I think that goes to if somebody, like Brian were to buy it, the hundred thousand can go to whoever buys it. To remodel it themselves, turn it into apartments, I think that hundred thousand can go to them, can't it?
Well, so the city must be the applicant and provide financial or in-kind resources. So I think that money could go to that contractor, we would provide that, but then we would have to provide also some money, some matching funds to it. So, but if your contractor, say, would do a hundred thousand, and you get a hundred thousand from here, and the city puts in twenty or thirty, or, I mean, I just don't know what it would take to fix that up up there.
Oh, that's great, and he's all rewired?
Right.
Uh, man, I bet, I got two hundred easy.
But would you have to do it all at once either?
No, no, probably.
Does anybody know what, well, the way all, I mean, I don't know who could made all that over there, in some way.
It was a big grant too.
I know, but who was there, did they hire a contractor, I mean, who was there, anybody know who that was that did it all, cause they.
I don't think the state needs that, or apartments. I think we want to hold.
The only real kicker we're gonna have in there is, is all street parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'd have to be, there's a lot behind the, um, pharmacy, I don't know how that would work forward out.
I think you could almost use that back part of that, what is the so-called meeting room or whatever. That could be changed, I think. But I, just a thought, that if we're gonna move forward and do something, I think we need to have some professional of some sort come in and look at the integrity of the building first.
See where we're at.
To make sure that there isn't larger issues than what we know of. You know, check the roof, um, I just put a new roof on my building out there, which is probably half a square feet of what the bank building is, it was eighteen thousand dollars. So, there's issues, issues. What's that?
Would our engineer be able to do that?
Well, I don't know. I'm sure they have people within their firm that can do it, but I think we need to do some investigation upfront and make sure that we don't get charged before the mortgage.
I agree.
Okay.
For everything, even to set up the offices and everything, to see where we're at.
So we'll find somebody to do an inspection on the building, maybe give us a ballpark number of what we wanted, if we wanted to change something upstairs.
What they think.
Plus or minus thirty percent type deal.
Yeah, right, that's what.
You know, just give us a ballpark idea, and then, um, we'll talk to the Chamber. We'll just talk to the Chamber and see if the Chamber would be interested, if they would actually utilize it. Make them look into it a little bit and see if.
I was gonna say, if, you know, yeah, I'd, I'd suggest maybe talk to the Chamber, if they're interested, maybe then if we can set up a time and kind of figure out, you know, how would we wanna use that if we're gonna go forward with it.
Let's find out.
Yeah, you could have development, like, wanna get involved too, you know.
Put the money on it? Who's gonna start that, uh, that's so Marty or?
But I mean, not only money, but maybe an office space or, you know, we're talking about, or was talking about Manning. Why couldn't we have, you know, volunteers do both the economic development and the Chamber, I mean, not just informational type stuff, they're not making any decisions, so.
Right.
That may help us out too in the long run.
If we had somebody that's, who's an architect, that wouldn't give us some vague ideas, not come in there and spend thousands of dollars, but.
I think your offices are probably alright up front, those were pretty nice, weren't they? So we shouldn't have to do any of that, it's just be.
Cause they all have a built-in desk and a built-in credenza in there.
So just be if we wanted to turn it back, you go garage, or if it's upstairs, well, it'd be done, I think, so.
Tell the department, like, I can go garage.
But.
It's like, oh, it's all got basement under it. I'm not saying it can't be done, but.
Yeah, I think find somebody, get somebody to look at, see what kinda.
Does it even, even where the like drive-through, pit back and facing?
Really?
And the, the other thing we're gonna have to contemplate in that building too is some sort of elevator.
Yeah. But that contractor should know some of that stuff.
He knew, uh, chair things, can't you?
Well, you could if you wanna take it up to twenty-three steps, get up there.
Is that what it is?
I think it's more than twenty-three.
No, I counted it.
You did count them?
Okay.
Oh, you counted.
It is twenty-three, okay.
The day we went up there, I counted it, yeah.
So it is, so it is the same number of steps as the other buildings down the hall.
But yeah, the integrity of the building would be number one, we need to make sure.
See what we know, we're getting into.
So how are we gonna find out who they have to look at?
Well, maybe, uh, like John said, maybe our engineering firm had those people available.
Talk to him, Jason. Or he would know somebody to contact.
Yeah.
Let's see what, put some feelers out, see what people think, and we'll, we'll, we'll have to make our mind up, like, we should move forward.
Yeah.
But if somebody wants to step up and buy it, we can sell it, right?
I know. I think we should.
Yeah, I think we should. So maybe we do a double course here. Do we wanna advertise the building in the meantime? And if I don't, who we wanna wait?
Well, it's our time to advertise it. Maybe we can find somebody that'll buy the upstairs and move us to downstairs, that'd be best case scenario.
Do we wanna then turn it over to one of the realtors? That's a, it's a problem there.
That they could advertise it, private estate or something, or whoever. That's the one I see all the time, but.
Just a thought.
I don't know, it's hard to address all this.
Yeah, there's a couple from Iowa State that serve, uh, Gribble and, um.
Right.
Gribble's one of them.
Who's, uh.
I can't think of it.
Cory is there, yeah.
Alderson, Alderson, you're right.
Yeah, Beth Masters.
And Beth with this too.
Can we do that, Sammy, have a realtor work for the city or?
Yeah, I think you can, either way you couldn't, but I'll find out.
Yep, see if we walk this.
So next we can decide who we wanna go, maybe go with, if we can do that, okay.
Alright.
Alright, approved candidate to Deputy Clerk.
We have some amount of time on this, if all, do you have to pay enough, not till like the September taxes and stuff?
In October it has to be done.
Okay.
I went with Whitney Thorne and offered her the position, she's actually moving here, she's gonna get married over Memorial Day weekend or Labor Day weekend. So she will be living here right on the outside of Helena. Um, I know some of you didn't think that that was the correct decision, but I based my decision on, on her past experience. She knows how to use our software, she knows how to use the Laserfish, and she already is a deputy clerk and has been for four or five years. So she knows the process, and I was just more comfortable with her.
That, that Spencer and Everly will, right?
Yes, and she moved from Spencer to Everly because the position came open in Everly, and she. Yes, and she moved from Spencer to Everly because the position came open in Everly and she actually lives in Everly.
Oh, she does, I was, I was talking, that was the other one.
So the only thing that um, and she is going to clerk school, so I told her we would cover the cost of that, but she did get a scholarship from that. Through the Northwest Iowa Clerks Association, so I think it's only three or four hundred bucks instead of seven hundred. And I said we would just reimburse the city of Everly and then she said she would like to have perhaps that Friday off before September first when she gets married. Said to her. Friday off and that's.
That's it?
So.
I'd ask for a week.
And she did accept the position at sixteen dollars.
And you felt um, working with you, you felt comfortable with her and everything?
I do, I, yeah, I don't have any problem with her, but you know.
And you're the one that's gonna be.
Right, and if we can't maybe work out and we've got lots of other candidates, that would be just, yeah, that could also be a job.
Ninety days probation.
Yep, ninety days, so.
Sounds good.
So I just need to have a motion to approve her.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
No parents?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Alright, request for garbage fee exemption.
Have we been doing that for people on their license plate?
Yeah, they're not coming back. We have done that before.
Cause I know we did with Trayvon.
Yes, and she had done a garbage fee exemption request before.
I remember that, yeah.
But she was coming back. Well, she was back for just a few months and now she isn't gonna be coming back according to her son. So he was wondering if they could possibly get the garbage fee exempted.
Then we pick up the garbage container, right?
Yes, then they bring it in, yeah.
And then if they clean it out or do whatever, they are in charge of doing the dumpster and all of that.
Yes, so you've gotta get that directly from town and country.
As long as we get their garbage containers now, we're gonna self-pick up.
Right.
Then you can't really get any garbage on the garbage truck, so. I'll make a motion to be.
Drop it.
Granted request.
I'll second it.
No parents?
Aye.
City Hall repairs, oh yeah.
Coming out in the front, all the paint's coming off up underneath here, the sidewalk is cracked, the rail is starting to get rusted. And every time it rains real hard, the water runs down the front side of, inside of the door. And then the tile on the bottom, when they replaced the glass in the door, that time a piece of the tile got busted also. So.
How does water get on the inside of the door?
I have no idea.
We haven't figured it out yet.
No, cause we've had two different, I mean, we've put e-spouts on, we've had a contractor look at it, they thought they had it. And it was good for probably about two years, but now this year, all of a sudden, it starts running down the inside of the door.
I think it has something to do with that flare up over the.
Well, we've had some violent rains coming this way to go down. My, my basin flooded this here a while back, just before we went on vacation, we haven't had any more for a while.
Well, I think we should get a contractor to give us a price then. But whatever they do, I would never.
To do all these repairs, you thinking?
I would do it. There is our city hall, we need to keep a looking at this.
That, that downspout, how is that supposed to go out? Is there supposed to be something under that stub wall or? Cause that, that's one thing I noticed one night was we were getting it downed for and it was all going clear out to the sidewalk and down the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's how that one goes, it runs down the sidewalk.
Yeah, I guess, okay.
Who'd you have before? Just look.
Who did the gutters? That was that gut guaranteed gutter or something?
That was on Cherokee, that was uh.
And then I think Brian Feldman had looked at it before that then, and it did, it was good for a couple of years, but something happened and now it's.
Right, the concrete uses up.
Yeah, or something.
I gotta talk to someone I do it with about every two years.
I think.
But I don't know if they can, like these sections of concrete, if they can just cut it out or if they gotta re, or I guess I don't know anything about that, but.
Well, I think we leave that up to the contractor to bid it.
I, I would have a contractor bid, um, not wood. They, you know, like your trim pieces like that, or there, you can get that in different colors, not plastic. Any color.
Engineered material?
Yeah, it's not, you never have to paint it, it doesn't fade, it's done forever.
Right. Yeah.
Kind of like Trex decking, it's kinda like that stuff.
So he wants that made as free, like or is it what we're paying for it?
It's gonna cost a lot anyway, so might as well be made as free by the time we get there.
Right, so we're done with it.
Picture writers, yeah.
Parade could probably get this repainted, scraped and repainted up underneath here and the rail, I don't know if we need to have that. Like powder coated or something again, or if we can just put it rust all the time.
If you want it powder coated, I think I can get us a deal, I think.
Somebody that can powder coat that, that got that long stuff?
Hitchcock, they do trailers.
I was gonna ask you about that, so. We could, we could pop, you know, we got an anchor bolt down, so they can back.
I just don't know about getting around stuff.
Take them somewhere, well, we'd have taken somewhere, probably get them stained blasted and then get them to.
I don't know if they do that or I can ask.
It hasn't been that long since we fixed those, how big are they, still like?
Yeah, I think.
Six, seven years ago.
You sat up here, I ain't playing, we having fun, no?
It was right after, right after, right after Kevin. What's that?
Cause we took it away and he did them, didn't he?
Jared did them.
Yeah.
I was right when Jared, right when Jared took over, I thought it was that first spring.
So do we do that again or are we looking for a better process there out there?
I think we can take them like a hitchcock or something like that, they have, I would bake them.
I would suggest powder coating them.
Yeah, but you can get them powder coated.
Powdered last long until you chip it.
Yeah.
If you have a steel scoop, it's gonna chip the paint, it's gonna rust there.
So do they put paint over the powder coating or is it in the powder?
It's in the powder.
Powder coat is the paint, they bake it to like really, really high temperature and they're baking on.
It's, it's all baked on and it's.
Sand last and the whole bit, so it's.
Real place you saw them as a two standard, I think it's standard, they do powder, you can put it out there, powder for.
I haven't think they can do that big though.
Probably not. Let's get a contractor to give us a price.
Sounds good.
When you're ready to have the rails quarter given, I mean, I don't know, like, that's what they do. We'll just have to get some likes and some sizes, so we'll make sure if this is their own.
Okay. Sounds good.
Uh, resolution to close streets on June twenty eighth with jamboree activities. Same as last year, I would assume.
I think so, I mean, we just need to get them closed, the parade lines up at twelve forty-five and down Main Street and then around the park area.
Do we have somebody that's coming up maybe, who's gonna be in charge of the street closings and when they get tied off and all that stuff? That can be kind of a train wreck for not watching it.
Who's on call that weekend?
I don't know, me and somebody.
I'll help, I'll help you.
I just.
Just call me if you need help, so.
There's been certain years where, like, twenty minutes before the parade, people were still parking in here and they weren't up yet. You know, I don't know who was in charge of it or whatever, I was, I was trying to find people who owned cars so I could get them to move their cars off.
Some people are tired of those things.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, you, you literally need somebody going up and down the street, kinda keeping an eye on it. And then the one year, by the time I dropped off at the. Football field when we started there, by the time I got back around, somebody had put cones out here in front of the damn street. So the parade, I went down there and I didn't see the parade, I'm like, well, where the hell is the parade? Come around the corner and somebody had put cones down here, smart butt, across the street, so they thought it was done and they peel off. So I have to pray, I didn't even see the parade.
Now, that's a problem, I know one year somebody parked a pickup down in front of the old bank building. And we took a flo, a floor jack, put it in the back end, spun it around, well, the guy comes in about eleven o'clock that night. After the parade, after everything, he wondered how his pickup got moved, so I happened to be right there, I said, I moved it.
Today, Chris.
Well, he left it the night before and took off someplace, they were drinking or something, anything.
Well, we just need somebody to kinda be around right up and down the street, make sure it's.
You, you've got to kind of be a horse of patootie. I've, I've done that for a number of years and it's, it's, it can be a problem.
It's just stuff where all the, you know, the downtown businesses are gonna be open.
Right, and that's part of it, cause they all wanna be in front of the grocery store or wherever.
They're all parked in front of the grocery store and Hawkeye and.
Yes, and they, they stand there right there for that parade. It's always been that way.
Open our streets, uh, streets cleared by a certain time.
Maybe that wouldn't hurt either if.
It may, it may help.
Let them close them off.
United or the Prairie Market would put a sign, from such and such a time, come to our back.
Yeah.
I don't know, that might help.
Alright, somebody like to make a resolution to close streets on June twenty ninth?
I will.
Is that you?
Yeah, we'll call. Danny Wrester?
Yes.
Johnny Lee?
Yes.
Carol Hunkell?
Yep.
Charlie Harper?
Yeah.
Resolution passes. Resolution to approve year-end transfers.
Just all the transfers to clear out the accounts. Um, the first one is to clear out the emergency fund and that goes in for ambulance replacement. And we always do a thousand dollars from the water and electric for utility or equipment replacement. Twenty-six thousand, that covers all of our street lights and that goes back into the general fund. And our normal transfers that we do every month from the electric and the water. Then eleven thousand, seven fifty goes from the electric in back into the sewer fund to pay for the wells, um, the shed and the lagoon. And then it's the same resolution, the ten percent from the local option sales tax goes to the general and then ten to the. Or ninety to the debt service fund. And you can do those all as one resolution.
And you do this every year?
Yes.
So the, this is a quick question, on the resolution uh, from the emergency fund to the ambulance. Did the fire department take advantage of some of those dollars? Could it be split or?
It could.
For the fut, I mean, just future, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause it would help those folks out, but maybe there, there's enough cash there either to provide it out, I don't know.
I, I'm sure, I mean, if you took seventy-three hundred dollars and split it each year, that would help them a little bit. So, seventy-four hundred, I guess.
I just know they're interested in buying some of that too, so. But I don't know how the dollars figure out for the ambulance years, so.
Yeah, the ambulance actually can get some money from the county too, that's gets set aside every year for them, but I don't know where they're at with that either right now.
Well, I'm not looking to change it this year, but maybe somebody who knows if you.
Okay.
Can take a look at that and see, you know, what's a greater advantage to the ambulance or the fire department or the first one, I think.
I'm sure ambulance is our chief.
Especially a hundred grand, if you're doing all due and you can rebody them and stuff, put them on a different chassis, but. That much is about a hundred grand.
That might all be changed to us.
Alright, somebody like to make that resolution for, to approve the year-end transfers?
I'll move.
I'll second it.
We'll call. Charlie Harper?
Yep.
Carol Hunkell?
Yep.
Johnny Lee?
Yep.
Danny Wrester?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Last but not least, request to purchase property. So I think I know your answer to this already, I don't have a whole lot of discussion on this one or not, but we can make it quick.
Well, I did ask Sandy to talk to economic development, this, what was their idea?
Yeah, they said they would go in, they wouldn't pay the full cost on it, but they said they would go in on it, but. They said they would prefer to see it that we don't take the house down, that we try and sell it. And once we got to talking about it, I do have a couple of people that are maybe interested in buying it.
Hard tricks.
But at a, you know, I mean, they're not gonna pay ten, fifteen thousand because they're gonna have, so.
Seventy-five minute, first little one.
So is that two economic development or private individuals?
Just pri, two private individuals.
Okay.
Well, I'm just gonna suggest otherwise, maybe we could do an online auction, like through um, Patterson or just like. You know, I don't know if they charge you a lot to do that or, you know.
Or ten percent, but that goes to the buyer usually.
Right, so to me, I mean, we can get rid of it that way rather than tearing it down, if somebody would make it.
Cause he's got, he's made one payment on the street assessment, I found that, so that takes that down a little bit.
To what's in our notes or less than what's in our notes?
No, to, to less than what's in the notes.
Oh, okay.
So I think that was the full amount I had in there.
Well, that sounds.
So, with the private individuals, are you just gonna let them do it together then, along with the private individuals?
No, I mean, these people are looking at it to get the house for free and they would fix it up or for.
Just like curious, I mean, do they know what it's like in there?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I, I wanna make a suggestion. I made this several years ago and um. I think we as a city can, can stipulate a little bit. Okay, whatever we sell it for, okay. But what I suggested some years ago, it wasn't feasible because there were too many leads against it. But I said, sell a thing cheap. Hundred dollars. Now, don't take that as what I'm, very familiar now, but the idea was. Whoever buys it, they got a time limit to put the, get the house finished. A year and a half, a year, whatever. They have to come up with an insurance bond to cover the appraised repair cost. So if they bail, we have the money to finish that house off and put it on market.
I don't know how that works.
Well, I did it when I moved a house on in California. I bought a house in Fresno, moved it to where our resident, the county came out and did a, an appraisal. It's a what it would cost to me to move it, it's been, well, kind of gone out. Then I had to, once again, I had to get an insurance bond for the amount of money that it cost to put the house up to code. Which I did, and for some reason, you know, I, the whole thing fell through, that insurance. Would cover the repairs and put the house at a marketable value and then. They could, they could sell it or do whatever, and I, I think that's what we need to do on this. We don't need any more of these projects hanging for five or ten or fifteen years as that has been. I'm, I'm a little bit of a hard ass about this, but I think we need to, let, I, I think we're in a position to, to make the rules.
Well, to me, it all depends on how the transaction happens, if it's between. Private individual and private individual, we really, with what you're explaining, can we really do anything with that? I mean.
Not.
So we don't have to worry about that.
Well.
If it's private, yeah.
But we could, would they have to come in for building permit or anything?
I would think.
If they fix it long enough on the inside.
I've followed the inside.
If it's on a. They're gonna have a garage or something like that, then they would have to, but.
To me, then we'd have the chance to maybe do that, the insurance thing.
Well, I think our first year would be to get these two people in contact with Moomba. And see if they can work something out and keep us out of it.
Right.
Now, I think we can.
That'll be the first thing.
We can assist on the building permit, because the house is in such a state of repair.
But you said they've seen it, they know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was in the house several years ago.
Do you need a building permit to put siding on or anything like that?
Not wanting to change in the dimensions.
Wanting to change in the.
Yeah.
Well, see, they're gonna put a garage on the back, that's why it slaps back there for foundation.
Well, yeah, that, I think the previous owner did that.
Yeah, the former Moomba.
Well, that is after they're out to go, it's like these private individuals just get.
He can talk to them, I mean, the, the people that are interested in it want it for free, cause they're gonna have to buy it.
Well, I understand now.
And he's asking fifteen thousand plus a street assessment, so I don't think they'll probably.
They might be able to come together, but.
You say these two people, are they separate or are they together?
Two separate people, one is pretty, very interested in the ones kind of, we'll see, so.
Well, they gotta pay at least a dollar, cause you gotta have some sort of compensation.
If you're not willing, if you're not willing to kick five grand out for it to rebuild it, to solve it, I don't know how serious they are yet.
Yeah, that's true too.
Well, the thing is, do the people have the willpower to start and complete the project? If, if we got somebody else buying the thing that we've had in there, then we're not getting anyone.
But these are local people, right?
Yep, they, each one of them has rehabbed the house here in town already, so.
So they know what they're getting, man.
It's not your wife again, is it?
Yeah.
I would say no, because usually I buy the most rehabbed. I gotta buy it without, you're known about it.
Alright.
That would be, Daddy, guess what?
Let's say get them in contact and see if they can make it happen. If they can't make it happen, then I guess we'll have to come back to discussion. Decide if the city's wanting to kick in a thousand dollars or whatever that is.
Is he firm on that fifteen, dude? Cause that, that place is.
Well, I think he wanted seventy-five originally, so I'm pretty sure he's firm on the fifteen.
Well, the last, last amount I remember was thirty-seven thousand, and that was at a council.
So are you saying that the total street assessment left is eleven fifteen?
Well, that he's made one payment.
Also, it's less than a.
Like a hundred and some dollars, but eleven fifteen, I expect ten, whatever that turns out to be.
So it's probably a thousand bucks there.
Yeah.
Well, I guess just an idea too, maybe to think about, but if, uh, economic development would wanna get involved and actually purchase the house and then do an incentive package like what Charlie talked about for one of these two individuals.
That'd be a good idea, too.
You know, what I'm, what I'm saying, to get the, get the house away and somewhere that we know we can work on.
It's not really the city's job, our job, to get in the houses, so.
Right, buying properties, right, it's, uh, that's what I'd say in economic development.
Right.
It sounds like they were interested, maybe, that.
Yeah, he said we would partner with the city on it, you know, he said, you guys have got, I mean, they got the same amount of money we did from the Gengar fund.
They got more left.
And yeah, they haven't used it all by any means, so.
When they meet partner, what does, what did you mean by that?
I'm not quite sure what he meant by that.
Was he drinking?
I don't think he, you know, he said, I don't think economic development wants to do the whole cost of it, but, you know, like renovate it and all that kind of stuff.
No, 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 and that's, I mean, that'd be excellent if we got two individuals interested in this. To me, then you can kind of leverage and say, look, this is what, what we want and when you gotta do it, duh, duh, duh. If one isn't willing to do it, maybe another one listens, so on, so on. But anyway, I agree that first thing is get these people in contact, see if they can get something.
Okay.
If we, if we can remain in federal seating to some degree and, and, and have some rules and regulations, I think we'd be wise. You know, because is that what's going on for what, twenty years?
Well, yeah.
We went down, it's probably fifteen years ago to salvage.
Twenty-four? Nobody got anything to say about twenty-four? Would you like to make a motion? To adjourn? Or to per?
To adjourn?
Adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I mean, it was a mess, so.
To adjourn.
Support to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sure.
Alright.
Well, I was in California, big gap, and a couple of the towns has the light, pretty downtown. And their downtown has a creek, and the lights on top of the buildings.
And it looks beautiful?
At night, it was cool.
Really?
And the streets were easy.
One around the south. No lights, no buildings, yeah, there wasn't a lot.
Have we heard any Laura talk, um, that other group about the lights and, and what she did, and she, I know I talked to Laura one day, she talked to him, I was about doing the contract. I mean, you were about that, but I've seen it all. Okay, she had talked to him, that they had everybody signed, I don't know what's on since then, but. Okay, she was gonna check in the app.
Well, yeah.
I might be able to find out what.
Yeah.
They did, you can see right there.
Come with.
How could they just ran out of, of energy?
Oh, okay. I would mind you, I would over, I would, I would, this is, she's been there.
The boy at night, it was beautiful.
I can believe it.
And, and they, they, the only way, they measured for here, the rest of it.
Really?
They, you know, they went on the front and kind of on the corner, but they didn't go way down the side street.
I think, okay, that would be good enough.
Yeah.
By their data, it looked like.
And they ran.
That's your main thing you see when you drive in.
And my car, it's building here when it makes a dish.
Yeah, right.
I can't imagine.
Forever. I tell you what, there's cars, trucks, and stuff.
The only thing is, um, Lauren, the guy, he's working there, and it's, Chris has talked about just putting poles and having them on there, and she said, I think that's.
It was up to one of them.
They got a hang, yeah.
I don't know, is it supposed to rain?
See, that's every day this week.
Oh, really? So then it would be.
Last I saw it, Wednesday.
Yes.
Did you sell that little tractor with the mower, right? Did you sell it? Does that thing work?
Well, would I?
I mean, he needs that money for it.
It, well, I probably would, if something broke, I don't know, a key or something broke off in the steering.
But, uh, I take, I don't. Like I said, uh.
I'm making it older.
Last year and a half ago, because I asked, we're looking for some. Reality is, yeah, that's probably.
Yeah.
No reason. They're trying to get them to mow the airport, they need shorter.
Yeah.
They don't seem to wanna cooperate. Figure we could get their grass down shorter, by driving it. If we don't get them to re-ride it, we're not gonna get them to do the information.
Yeah, they should do that, or desire, or three or so this week, and now next week. You know, I do think that if it came to an auction, that they would still go for a few weeks, seven, twelve thousand.
Yeah.
But, uh, one thing I always, it certainly is foundation and.
Get his stuff put together.